Got my work computer in.
It's just what I thought, yeah. See, like, I'm already, like, (inaudible).
The cat's away.
It's out of control, it's out of control.
Officially see you on camera.
All right, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting in the Beloit City Council. It is now 7:00 PM on Monday, December 2nd, 2013, at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Roll call, please.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Second item is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Special Day Orders of the Day and Announcements. We have one today. Item 3A, please.
The recognition of the CivMx Significant Program Award for the City of Beloit Safe Lifting Program.
Good evening, councilors, city attorney, assistant to the city manager. Yeah, I'm pleased to present an award tonight to Jodeen. Jodeen's heads the safety team out of Public Works. Safety team this last summer come up with a new lifting program, and our insurance company does a significant awards program every year. There's criteria, it has to be met. There was 14 entries this year. City of Beloit was one of the winners. So we get this beautiful plaque, and I will read this for Jodeen. Cities and villages, a mutual insurance company acknowledges that the City of Beloit has demonstrated excellence, creativity, and functionality in the development of an original risk management and loss control activity, and by sharing this idea to your community, has been chosen as a 2013 Significant Program Award winner for submitting the Safe Lifting Program. And along with that, they also win $1,000. But they get to spend on something, I guess it's not in their budget, so. Jodeen?[186.12][186.12](applause). Questions you can ask Jodeen. No, don't have any.
Item four would be public hearings. While we have two public hearings on the agenda as published, the application has been withdrawn by the applicant, therefore removing the requirement for us to hold those hearings. So we will pass over those items, considering we don't have any hearings to actually occur, and we'll move on to citizens' participation, which is item five. We have reached a point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you refrain from any personal attacks and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any individuals wishing to come forward and speak on item five, citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on our item five, citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on our item five, citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation and move on to the consent agenda, item six. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business. Councilor DeForest, do you have something you wish to say?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to remove item H from the consent agenda, please.
Doki. All right. Any other councilors wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Well, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6G now. Do I have a motion?
Move and approve. Second.
Moved by Levy, second by Lukey. All in favor of the consent agenda improvement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed by a vote of seven to zero. Item 6H.
An application for a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through use in the C-3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 204 Park Avenue, Domino's Pizza.
And this is just a referral to the plant commission. Do you have anything, do you have any questions specifically?
I do have one question. That's right, I forgot to ask upstairs, I apologize. I guess I was confused, this is the former KFC building, correct?
Yes.
It used to have a drive-through, so I guess I was confused about the prior zoning and why the change.
It probably never had a conditional use permit for the drive-through.
Okay.
Because that provision was put in later, is my guess.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have any record of there being a conditional use permit for it, and the code now requires a conditional use for every drive-through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, does that satisfy your curiosity?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right then, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Lukey, second by Levy. All in favor of referring item 6H, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven to zero. On item seven, which is ordinances, we will be moving 7A to behind 11A in the order. We're pushing that one back, so we will now move to order, item 7B.
A proposed ordinance to create section 7.065, 14.06 sub-6, sub-BG, to amend section 7.12, 7.24, sub-9, sub-I, 2A, 7.29, sub-3, sub-C, 7.29, sub-3, sub-D, and to repeal and recreate section 7.28, sub-1, of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the Property Maintenance Code and Residential Rental Dwelling Permit Program.
Mrs. Christensen.
Okay, the staff met with the Beloit Property Managers Association a number of months ago, and we discussed a number of issues, and we agreed to consider them and then put together an ordinance amendment, which is before you today. The first section of this ordinance actually codifies inspection fees that were approved as part of your budget process. We actually didn't have the authority in the code itself to do the inspection fee, so that will codify it. Section two of this ordinance allows an approval process for extensions for a longer period than 120 days. Right now, we were restricted in that way, so this would extend that. Section three of the ordinance removes the requirement to provide a combination screen and storm door, and this door is not required in new construction as part of the Uniform Dwelling Code, so we felt it was probably a little over the top to require it in existing housing stock. Section four of this ordinance amendment updates the ceiling height requirement to match the Uniform Dwelling Code for structures built after 1980, and modifies the minimum ceiling height requirement for structures built before 1980. The issue we were having is that if, what the current code said was that if it has seven foot, it had to have a seven-foot ceiling in order to be considered a habitable room. That was difficult in some houses that were built, not necessarily the older houses, but those that were built more between 1940 and 1980. Some had shorter ceiling heights. We did come up with a compromise. I think the Beloit Property Managers Association had talked about either removing it or doing something like six feet. Given that the minimum requirement for a door is 6'4", and then we thought a four-inch header, 6'8" seemed to make some sense, and that would provide some relief from the seven-foot standard, and so that's what's being proposed. Section five allows for light fixtures to be placed on the wall of habitable rooms. The previous requirement required them to be installed in the ceiling. Section six allows more options for closet lighting. It essentially refers you back to the Electrical Code. One of the issues they were having was the requirement for a light switch and not just a pull chain, and in certain conditions where that light is in the center, a pull chain is all that's required in the Electrical Code. And then the last section establishes that the rental dwelling permit may be suspended for failure to pay those fees that are required in section one of the ordinance. And we ask that you just hold the first reading tonight to take a look at it for a couple weeks, and also let the landlords take a look at it, and then not take action for two weeks.
Thank you. We have a motion.
So moved?
Okay, moved by.
Second.
DeForest, second. Aye. Sprite, sir, now do we, anybody have any questions or comments on this one at this point? Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I would like to make one comment. Ms. Christensen, I just want to thank you and your staff for taking the time to meet with the Beloit Property Managers Association to see where we could address some other concerns that came out of the summit, so thank you for that, and I'm excited to see the changes here.
Yeah, and Beth Krieger and Teri Downing are the two that actually worked hard on this. I mean, I'm presenting it tonight, but those are the two that actually did the hard work on drafting this ordinance amendment.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll hold the vote to hold this over, relay this over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voted to lay this over by a vote of seven to zero. Item 7C.
A proposed ordinance to amend sections 1.58, sub-8, sub-D, 4.07, sub-1, 4.07, sub-5, 25.04, sub-4, sub-B12, 25.04, sub-4, sub-C, 13.25, and 13.26, sub-2, sub-A1, of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to municipal court costs.
Ms. Krieger.
Thank you. The staff report outlines the process generally of the court costs that are charged by a municipal court. Currently, we charge $28, which is the maximum under the law that we're allowed to charge. The legislature approved a $10 increase, up to $38 per ticket. We have historically set our court costs at that upper level, so today we're just asking that. We increased it from the $28 that it currently is to the $38, which is allowed by that new law. In addition, when I was doing some work to prepare this change, I just noticed a change that hadn't been taken care of back in 2007. There was a resolution that was passed. We just made the ordinance consistent with the resolution that was previously passed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. This was originally intended for suspending the rules. Do we have any interest in suspending the rules? Any motion for that?
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
Okay. Moved by Levy, second by DeForest. Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Councilor DeForest.
I do have one, I do have one question. Trying to think how to phrase this. From my understanding, municipal court, the cost of it are being covered already, and actually, we're a little flush. We have more revenue coming in than expenses, so I just wanted to check with you to see about the rationale for the increase. I mean, I know that, I know that the state legislature has allowed the increase, but I guess I just wanted to check to see why we decided to go up to the maximum amount if we're not necessarily needing it to cover court costs.
I guess I'm not necessarily in agreement that we're covering all of our costs, because municipal court not only entails the operations of the municipal court system, but those departments that feed into the municipal court. So I think if you look at overall, the police department, our housing code services, fire department, wastewater, all of those entities feed into municipal courts. So I think that that, the $10 off, the $10 increase offsets all of those fees. The $10 amount would go into the general fund, and so it would be utilized by the city as a whole, so I think there is a good basis to increase it to $10. It hasn't been done for about seven years, and I think the city could use the revenue.
Okay, so it does go into the general fund and help some of those other departments outside of municipal court, and then is part of the rationale that that way the services that are required are covered by those individuals who use the system, use the court system then?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of seven to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
Move and approve on the merits, Mr. President. Second.
Moved by Van de Bogart, second by Levy. Do we have any questions or comments on the merits? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've passed the item by a vote of seven to zero. Item eight is appointments. We have none, so we move on to councilor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Councilor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. During this holiday season, I would like to encourage everyone to buy local first. We have some fantastic businesses in our community. I hope to see everyone out at Hollidazzle, which is a great event. It encourages folks to come downtown to do their shopping, and certainly would like to see us support all of our local and family-owned businesses during this time of year. Please, I would encourage you to buy local before you look elsewhere. We have some wonderful business establishments that we can support at this time, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Van de Bogart.
My observation would be this, Mr. President, we've had last week our first significant snowfall and accumulation. We're supposed to get some, something precipitation tonight and maybe in through the week. Remind everybody to slow down, leave space between yourself and the vehicles ahead of you and around you, and we'll all get through winter without too many crashes. So it's dangerous out there when you're slipping away, even if you got the four-wheel-drive stuff, so slow down.
Councilor Kincaid.
Nothing to report today.
Councilor Levy, or Lukey, we'll leave him first.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Sprite, sir.
Nothing this evening.
Oh my goodness. And Councilor Levy?
Nothing.
Oh, gosh darn it.[1001.23][1001.23](laughing). All right, and why break a streak? We'll just have a goalpost here, you know, comments on the ends and nothing in the middle. Okay, all right, so that's good. Item 10 is city manager's presentation. I believe Mr. Boyson has a presentation for us.
I'm pleased this evening to provide a general presentation concerning the City of Beloit Winter Maintenance Program. I'm very pleased to have heard of City of Beloit's program from afar. It's highly recognized as being an excellent program, highly efficient, effective, and environmentally sensitive, and I'm very pleased to be here in Beloit, of course, now for the first winter season as it begins, and seeing the program unfold that's so well-planned. With me today is Chris Walsh, who of course has been the designer and refiner of the program for many years, but Chris suggested I would go ahead and do this presentation, but she's certainly available for any questions that we might need to talk about any details concerning the program. The tools that are used involve the pre-snow and ice control duties. The program, of course, prepares itself for the winter throughout the season. It involves training, weather forecasting, there's advertising, and I think last week, most everyone would have seen the wrapper that's on the Beloit Daily News and also the State Line News with many items of information and details concerning places to park and things of that nature when, if you don't have a garage or private driveway to relocate your cars to. Then, of course, the debriefing after each major program, and also the chemicals and equipment that are utilized for the snow and ice control. The general policy statement for the snow and ice control program is to provide safe travel throughout the city through the removal of snow and ice. The winter objectives include to minimize hazards for pedestrians and motorists, reduce economic losses to businesses in the community, restore safe travel conditions, provide fiscally and environmentally sound practices. The winter maintenance goals include provision of safety and mobility to road users, and doing this without negatively impacting the environment, and to do this within the budget, and providing the right level of service for the program. There are service levels throughout the different types of streets and areas of the city. Of course, major arterial streets, such as those that might serve the heaviest of traffic use and hospitals and things of that nature, have essentially a bare pavement objective, but under lesser traveled streets, bare wheel passes and generally passable conditions are normally pursued to obtain essentially a safe and usable street, but while minimizing chemical applications to maintain the highest level of environmental sensitivity and minimizing potential for water pollution of groundwater and surface waters. The applications and priorities of the program include the chemicals, including salt, calcium chloride, GeoMelt, salt brine, and the various blends of 50/50, 80/20, and 80/15/5 mixes, of the mixing basically the salt brine, calcium chloride, and the GeoMelt products. And then the prioritization is first the main roads, bridges, hills, then residential streets, alleys, and then parking lots and sidewalks are also attended as time permits Sensible salting is the mantra of the program overall. The keys to an effective anti-icing or de-icing program are to be sensitive to the environment while providing a safe service to the traveling public. Utilization of materials that produce good results and that are friendly to the environment yet remain cost-effective, and finding equipment that meets the specific needs of the various Code enforcement issues with snow and ice are, of course, very important to the overall success and achievement of the goals of the program. The inspection of sidewalks for the compliance of sidewalk clearing, that's the responsibility of the adjacent property owners, is handled by the code enforcement staff, in addition to parking violations during snow emergencies, many of which I understand are handled through the police department, and then also the plowing, snow blowing, and shoveling of snow into the right-of-way, which is also a code enforcement issue that's prohibited. Of course, you need to clear your own driveways and your own sidewalks without actually depositing the snow back on the city streets. Concerning the sidewalk clearance program, the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks is required within a 48-hour period after snow stops pursuant to the city ordinance. There are potential fines of $177 for non-compliance with this city code. Concerning street parking, no person shall park a vehicle on a city street during a declared snow emergency. And again, if you were to violate this, there are penalties and potential towing of up to amounts of $50. Moving snow into the right-of-way is, of course, prohibited, as I mentioned before. This, of course, would create a potential unsafe situation, and again, there's penalties up to $177 for that potential ticket. Snow emergencies are based on weather forecasts or actual conditions that require the removal of snow and ice from the roads. Snow emergencies are generally announced through the local media and on the city website. I've been asked, though, to just emphasize that, of course, the accumulation of three inches of snow is the trigger for these snow emergencies, and people who own vehicles must watch for that to make sure that they're alert to that developing situation to move the cars to the appropriate locations. If there are any damage complaints concerning mailboxes or sod or curb damage, then the Public Works Department Operations Division should be reached at 608-364-2929. And in general, from an environmental standpoint, plowing is the best method for removing snow. It takes, and it also takes four times more salt to remove ice than it does to prevent it. Today's an example where the streets of the city have been pre-applied with a salt brine for an anti-icing application, and this is then intended to assist us this evening as we have a light snow, and hopefully then we'll maintain safe streets with a minimal amount of actual chemical application. The city's snow and ice control program is highly recognized and highly appreciated. I know I've received many comments and feedback from residents and businesses in the community already, that I've talked about how excellent the program is and how impressed everyone is with the operation it's achieved, so I'm looking forward to seeing it unfold, and I've been very impressed with the couple of applications that we've seen so far this year with a very light, but pre-salting of bridges and one a couple weeks ago, and then this pre-application today looks to me to be a very effective implementation of a very well-planned program. So with that, if there's any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer them, and of course, Chris Walsh is here in addition to myself to answer any questions there may be.
Any questions or comments from councilors? Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I just feel like I would be remiss if I just didn't make a comment and commend our staff for their hard work in keeping our streets safe. There are so many times, hopefully we won't have as many storms this winter, but when I'm sitting at home looking at the accumulation of snow and thinking about our crews out there all night long clearing that, and how much I appreciate them, so if you could please pass on from us how much we appreciate their work to keep it safe.
We will, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lukey.
I too wanted to commend your staff, especially Ms. Walsh, for many years ago being proactive and being ahead of other communities with putting the beet juice or whatever on the streets and being very proactive and keeping our streets very safe ahead of time, and so thank you for your job, well done.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much. All right, we have, the next item is item 11A.
A resolution approving an annexation agreement between the City of Beloit and the Town of Turtle regarding the properties located at 9817 and 9949 South Turtle Town Hall Road.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parcel of land in question was purchased by corporate contractors from the Town of Turtle. It had previously been used by the township as its town hall. As such, it was not included in the, what was termed the boundary adjustment area in the boundary agreement that we have with the township. Because it's not in the boundary adjustment area, any annexation of properties not in the adjustment areas have to be approved by both governing bodies. In this case, the township has already voted in approval and executed it. The company, as I understand it, wishes to develop the site as a corporate headquarters, both for itself and for Black Hawk Transportation. To do that, city utilities, water, sewer are not only desirable, but I assume necessary, and so for us to provide that, the land does need to be annexed, and we, like I say, the town has already reviewed and approved the agreement. The agreement was negotiated over the last number of weeks or a couple months, and would allow, assuming this council sees fit to approve it, the annexation to proceed, and the ordinance, that's the next item of your agenda to be adopted and placed into effect. The agreement does provide for revenue sharing. The revenue sharing is set at two-thirds of whatever the current township tax rate is, so they would get two-thirds of their share, their otherwise share of the taxes on this parcel each year for 30 years. It's capped at no more than $2 per $1,000 evaluation. According to the calculations we've done internally, given the differential between the township's tax rate and the city's tax rate, the city would retain approximately 90% of the total taxes collected each year on the parcel. That's how that two-thirds basically equates when you compare the difference in tax rates. So that's the essence of the agreement. Certainly, we'll try to answer any questions any of you may have.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Moved by Lukey, second by Van de Bogart. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, Councilor Forrest.
Thank you. I am glad to see us actually using revenue sharing in practice. I know this is an idea that we talked about with the Town of Turtle, so I'm excited to see that we're able to reach a compromise for annexation where we were able to use revenue sharing. So thank you, Tom, for your work on that, and I'm glad to see that we were able to come to a compromise that obviously the Town of Turtle's happy with, and that the city benefits as well, so it's definitely a win-win. Thank you.
Councilor Sprite, sir.
I also wanted to comment that this is a win-win, not just for the city and the town, but also for the business that is locating there, and so I think everybody is benefiting from this, and even though this agreement is a... from this. And even though this agreement is a one-of-a-kind deal on this property, I hope that our ability to come to an agreement on this might pave the way for future discussions on broader issues with the town. And so I'm excited to support this.
Thank you. And I'd point out that your comment is quite likely, because we have been discussing this sort of thing with them for quite some time. And this particular agreement, we had to consider it, that it might have been applied broader, even though we have language that indicates that we won't hold it as precedential. It very likely is going to color any future discussions, but I hope very much that this will paves the way to a greater boundary area agreement. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right then. All in favor of the annexation agreement, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. So now we will now move to item seven A, so that we've handled the underlying issue.
A proposed ordinance attaching the properties located at ninety-eight seventeen and ninety-nine forty-nine South Turtle Town Hall Road to the City of Beloit from the Town of Turtle. The Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
This is the actual ordinance that would actually attach the property to the City of Beloit. The properties are surrounded by the city on three sides. And this attachment also includes a fifty-foot right-of-way. Their development proposal does include some access right-of-way, which staff is supportive of them bringing forward a vacation. And Plan Commission had recommended approval. And Brad Austin from Corporate Contractors is here, and he's got some drawings of what they are proposing that I thought you all might like to see. So I'm proud if you want to bring them up.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. City Attorney, appreciate your help on this for the last many months, getting it negotiated with the township. So it took some time, but it got done. So what we're proposing, this actually is the building we're proposing. It's eight-thousand feet footprint, so sixteen-thousand feet total. Black Hawk Transportation will be on the lower level. CCI will be on the upper level. And we think it's going to be a very attractive building for the, basically, the northeast entrance of the Gateway. When you're coming in from Milwaukee, you're going to see it well. And plus, when you're going towards Milwaukee, you'll have, this view is like when you're, well, here, I can show you where the view is. This is Gateway Boulevard, or excuse me, yeah, Gateway Boulevard, and then Turtle Town Hall Road that goes down the hill. So that view I just showed you is like right here, straight in front of it. But when you're coming from Beloit, you'll see a large two-story. You'll be seeing all this when you come out from the city. So we think it's a very attractive building, and it'll be a good addition to that former town hall site, which now is kind of decrepit-looking. We did try to give that building to anybody in the township that wanted it. The town didn't want it, so. Any questions?
Counselor Vanda Bogart, yes.
I noted, Mr. Austin, there's no provision there for any sort of parking of trucks. This is the corporate headquarters for Black Hawk. This isn't going to be the terminal or the
Correct. This is just the office, strictly the office building.
And then the second question, tongue-in-cheek, will you still have the Turtle Town Hall pancake breakfast there once a year, like you
No, we won't.
Shocks.
I can find some and ship them to you. Any other questions?
Counselor DeForest.
I'm very excited about this investment. So thank you for the corporate headquarters citing there and designing such a beautiful-looking building. It'll be a great inviting entrance to Beloit.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Vanda Bogart, did you?
I was just going to move approval of the motion, Mr. President. Second.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Is this to suspend the rules?
Yes. Is your motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. Do we have any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, all in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have suspended the rules by a vote of seven to zero on the underlying merits.
Move approval.
Moved by Sprite, sir, seconded by Levy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. All right then. And that would bring us to, in this convoluted order, we'll bring it back to eleven B.
A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Beloit and the Village of Clinton regarding the provision of statewide voter registration system services.
Thank you. And this is your
Sure. The Government Accountability Board and the Wisconsin statutes require that a centralized electronic database with voter registration information be maintained. And that system is called the statewide voter registration system, or SVRS. The city clerk, me, and our office, maintains the data for the City of Beloit, all the registration data. And the, we are what we call a self-provided. The Village of Clinton has been a relier. They've relied on Rock County, the Rock County clerk, to provide this service to them. Recently, the Rock County Clerk's Office indicated that they can no longer provide these services to municipalities over two thousand people. So the Clinton Village Administrator and Clinton clerk met with me in October to discuss the possibility of my staff and myself providing this service to the Village of Clinton. And at the meeting, we talked about how this would be an appropriate short-term solution to the village's staffing issues. They are, they have minimal staff and minimal resources to provide this kind of service for themselves. And we agreed on a cost structure, which is three hundred dollars per election, and that three hundred dollars includes up to ten hours of work, and the printing and copying as outlined in the staff reports, excuse me, in the one staff report, and then an additional twenty-five dollars per hour for any additional work hours above and beyond the ten hours. We do not anticipate being, you know, requiring more than ten hours of work for my staff for each election. As I outlined in the staff report, we, the services that we would be providing, the Village of Clinton, include maintaining their voter registration information, printing poll lists for their actual election day, providing them with alphabetical lists of voters, and entering the voter history, and then entering the cost and final data for each election, as is required by the GAB. The Clinton Board, Village Board did meet on December, or excuse me, November nineteenth, and voted to approve the attached memorandum of understanding. And I'll answer any questions.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, second.
Okay. Moved by Lukey, seconded by DeForest. Counselor Sprite, sir.
Question, or comment and a question. I'm glad to see that we're partnering with Clinton. We've obviously done a number of partnerships with our more directly adjacent neighbors and with Janesville, and it's great to see us working with Clinton as well. Just to ask the question I asked upstairs for the public, I know you say you think it can be done in ten hours. You know, I know elections can be a lot of work, and if, just wanted to make sure that you're completely comfortable with this, and then also that if it turns out that it's, if for any reason isn't working, we're able to charge additional for additional staff time, or decide not to extend the agreement if it's not working for us. Is that correct?
Yes. We will be paid the three hundred dollars for up to ten hours, and then anything beyond ten hours, we will be able to charge back to the village at twenty-five dollars per hour. And then additionally, this agreement is good for two years through the 2014, 2015 election cycle. And at the end, you know, nearing the end of 2015, we would reevaluate the situation and see where Clinton is with their staffing, and if it's feasible for us to continue to provide this, or if it's, you know, more efficient for them to take it on themselves.
Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions, Madam Clerk. One, printing costs, are they included in the three hundred, or is that in addition?
The printing costs for the two identical poll lists and two alphabetical lists of voters for each election are included in the three hundred.
And if there are errors that occur from the Clinton side giving us the information, or the information isn't presented in a timely fashion, or is, I didn't see this in the agreement, but is there any process to address responsibility for delay, or for inaccuracies, or for some of the other snafus that might occur?
We will be maintaining the actual data in the system. So any time that we're printing out the poll lists or the alphabetical lists of voters, you know, we will be, we input that data. So we will get the voter registrations. We will get that information from the village. And if we ever, the, the Clint, the Village of Clinton clerk and administrator understand the deadlines that are associated with these elections. In fact, the village clerk is a retired clerk from the City of Pewaki. So she, she fully understands the, you know, the deadlines and the requirements to get all voter registrations to us by a certain point in order for them to make the poll list. So I don't anticipate it being an issue, but I also am very confident that between the administrator and the clerk and myself, we can work anything, any issues out during the
And we've got two years. We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. And so one lofty matter remains to us is item twelve. Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Seconded by Sprite, sir. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.